Hello and welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for Wednesday, April 1st, 2020. I know it is April Fool's Day, but this is not a joke. We're actually online on a via teleconference only meeting. We're all safe at home and safe at the city council office, but we're welcoming all of you to join us in this public meeting. We'll begin with the roll call, please. Allison.
Councilmember Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hilmer.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. And Allison, do we have members of the public joining us right now on the line?
We do have members of the public with us. And so if they're here and would like to make public comments throughout the meeting, can follow this section here, email your public comments, submit it on our public comment form, or raise your hand through the GoToWebinar app during the meeting.
Terrific. Thank you. And for those of you who are listening in, we really appreciate your patience while we sort through all of the rapidly changing things that are happening in our society and also what are happening on how we try to provide public service. So moving to that, we'll go to public comment. This is only for items that are not on the agenda, and it's a time for members of the public to address the city council. And it does not allow us to provide a lot of comment on it or to debate any issues, but we can refer things, matters for further discussion. At this point, we've had two email public comments that came in. And would you like to speak to those, Allison?
Yes, we received two emails that are available for the public to read in the online agenda packet or the agenda packet that's included in the handout section of the GoToWebinar app. If you'd like to make additional public comment now, you can raise your hand or send an email to comment@cityoflarkspur.org or send an ecomment@cityoflarkspur.org-comment.
Terrific. So our two already existing public comments come from Mr. Steven Turner and Mr. Nathaniel Dean. Thank you very much, sirs, for those. We will return periodically back to public comment just to make sure everyone has that opportunity. But at this point, Allison, is there anyone that has acknowledged they'd like to make a public comment?
We have no one raising their hand at the moment, and no public comments submitted via email or comment form at this time.
Okay, terrific. So we'll come back to it again, maybe in a few more, after a few more other additional things. So we move on to... Oh, yes.
Maybe while people decide they want to make a public comment, the theme of Mr. Dean and Mr. Turner's public comments are concerns about rent increases. Take this opportunity with the mayor's allowance to just remind the public that state law passed AB 1482 to provide protection to renters. And so that is the rent control now in effect in Larkspur. And if these individuals are experiencing rent increases that they believe violate state law, they have the right to pursue legal remedy against their landlord pursuant to that law. And I'd encourage them to consult with someone from a legal background as to what those rights may be.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Before we move on, one more chance, Allison. Has anybody weighed in quite yet during, while we're still at this item?
We've received no more public comments.
Okay. Moving on to number three, presentations and proclamations. There are none tonight. So number four is approval of the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and be enacted by a simple vote. Is there any member of the city council who would like to remove an item for discussion from the consent calendar? I don't see anyone. I'll put it out to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to remove an item for discussion from the consent calendar?
No one from the public has, would like to remove an item from the consent calendar.
Okay. So seeing none, I can all accept a motion for approval.
I'll have you make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Okay, Kevin.
I'll second it.
I guess first second came from Councilmember Paulson. So if I recall last time, we had to do a roll call vote. Is that right, Sky?
That is correct. Roll call votes are required.
Go ahead, Allison.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes. Thank you. That brings us to number five, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. A lot of what I want to update you on, I'll be providing to you under the business item about city activities in response to the coronavirus and also just how that's affecting city operations. I'd like to use this time actually to just highlight one thing, which is today is Census Day. And I know people are getting a lot of emails and messaging that the census is important. I just want to underscore how important it is because a lot of decisions over the next decade about funding are dependent on the information collected in the census. And so it truly does have an impact on our ability to give Larkspur residents quality services, particularly in areas of infrastructure and in some areas of housing and other law that rely on census data. So please, please, complete your census.
Any questions? I know you'll have a lot more to say when we get down to item number eight, but any questions on that from the council? Nope. And I think we have information. It's census2020.org, I think. Oh, I better not give out that address until I'm absolutely positive, but it should be on our website. Next, we're moving to councilmembers' oral reports and comments. And I had actually asked that we go alphabetically by first name. So that puts Councilmember Hilmer, Dan, first to have any reports or comments.
I have nothing this evening, Madam Mayor, other than to support that the effort of all of us working together to get through these challenging times.
Great. Gabe, Paulson?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up from our meeting two weeks ago where we were trying to reach out to the mobile home community. Our ad hoc committee has found a way now to conference, and we just want everybody out there to know that we'll be reaching out soon and would like to get together and move forward with the issues.
Kevin, any, anything to report?
Nothing specifically. But I do want to, you know, kind of reinforce what Dan Hilmer just said in supporting our community and the great work that our city manager is doing in managing our needs within our community, including, you know, challenges with the large infrastructure projects, which I'll look forward to hearing about later. But I just really appreciate the hard work that our city staff is doing under these difficult times. I'll be having a couple of meetings, participating in a couple of meetings with MCE, executive and technical committees over the next couple of days. So I'll be able to report on that later on. But that's really about it. Oh, the one thing I did want to say is to encourage people to get out and exercise, even if you're just doing it in your living room. Please do what you can to keep yourselves healthy.
Well, luckily, we have a lot of really wide walking paths in Larkspur and Greenbry. So there's lots of places to walk to.
But they're kind of overwhelmed, as I noticed this afternoon. There's a lot of people out walking. So if you're out and about, please be careful because there are a lot of people out walking. There are a lot of kids out in my neighborhood, for example, on trikes and just getting around with their dogs. So just when you're out and about, just be mindful of the fact that others are, you know, trying to do their best and try to be safe and be safe with them.
Great. Thank you. Scott, is there anything you would like to report out on?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I just want to say that as the mayor and as representative of the council, that we really, our mission and values at this particular period of time are really, in my opinion, to support our first responders and the public's health and safety. First responders are the ones who are our frontline people who are engaging with our community at all different levels, from policing to paramedics to our firefighters. And I think it's very important that we maintain our limited resource and focus on making sure that they have protection and that they are providing quality and safe care to our residents, which they are. I was very reminded of this because just yesterday, a Santa Rosa police officer passed away from COVID-19. And I think it's very important that we pay attention to those, our first responders. Second is, as a council and as a city, we all need to narrow in on what our expectations are now and realize that our cities are extraordinarily hard from their homes, and they have very limited resources in that way. And we're all trying to figure out how to respond. So I'm imploring the public to be patient and to realize that this is a very rapidly moving and changing situation that we're all dealing with. And then lastly, for those of you who are listening, and the councilmembers I know are all committed to this also, is to do whatever you can to support our local businesses in a safe manner in which they're open. Many are open for takeout. Others are open for essential services. And as much as possible, support our own local business when you get the chance. So that's my report out at this point. And the last thing I want to report out on is that the Larkspur Library and Community Center Subcommittee, which is comprised of the Larkspur Library and Community Center Foundation members, our city manager, and Vice Mayor Harof and I, we have had going on for the last year, I've only participated in the last meeting itself, is an ongoing working group about how to move forward the Library and Community Center project. We met last week, or March 20, what day was it? March, we met a couple of weekends, a couple of Mondays ago.
All blended together.
Yeah, a couple of Mondays ago, online, like this. And I really am very committed to that project, but had to put a pause on what's happening right now so that we are focusing really in on the immediate needs in the city and the immediate infrastructure needs of the city and public safety needs of the city. So at that meeting, we agreed to continue our ad hoc meetings. Every month, we have the next one scheduled and to continue to review processes. But at this point, we're on pause. So I wanted everyone to know about that. And I'll continue to update, and Vice Mayor Harof and I will as we continue to work through that.
Madam Mayor, if I could just add one little footnote that I forgot to mention about the Chamber of Commerce.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we, so I'm actively involved with them, and we've had some suggestions about possible opportunities for local restaurants and food service providers to support particularly our local healthcare community. So we're working on that now. There's a couple of different options to do that. But I think the Chamber, this is an opportunity for the Chamber to kind of step up and to support our local restaurants and their own support for particularly healthcare providers within Marin County.
Thank you for that. Scott, did you have a question?
Yes, just based on your report, my thought is that I had spoke to Dan about the $750,000 that may or may not be earmarked for the library. I was told that there is a document that exists that is, you know, spells it out. I'm going to request that that document be provided to all of us, that we review it. And if we can come to an agreement that we basically say that yes or no, that that $750 is dedicated to the library so that while we are pausing, and while I agree with you that pausing on the library while we're looking at other priorities makes sense, the people who are working on that may not necessarily need to pause right now. And by reviewing that and giving them a thumbs up or a thumbs down on that money, that may help them move forward while we pause so that everybody can end up in the same place a little bit faster.
So I'd like to make a comment, and then I'll ask for Dan Schwartz to make a comment on that. So that's an issue that we can take to this working group. And those are kind of the things that are decided, can be brought up into the working group, whether that is a direction that the working group decides to go on.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a point of order.
Sure.
It sounds like we're discussing something that needs to be agendized.
Good point. That's a good point because that has not been agendized yet, and that's a whole different item. So taking your point, Scott, I'll see if we can get that agendized. What do you think? Do you have a comment on it?
I'm sorry, are you asking me or Dan?
I'm asking, or... Oh, there's no audio.
Did you want to hear from me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm certainly happy to create an agenda about the Zimmer Trust. I think just in the way this was just framed, it might be helpful for the public to understand what Councilmember Candell is alluding to. He's asked for a copy of the documents that Mr. Zimmer's trust actually shared with us that say, that say that the money's for the library, which is all they actually say. The councilmembers who were seated on the council, when we received the money, have already seen those documents. I'm happy to make them available again to the whole council. The trust documents are actually on file as public documents with the court. So they're not secret documents. I just wanted, I'm a little concerned with the way that sort of ended up sounding. And then just reminding the council, there's an adopted resolution with your policy direction about the Zimmer Trust. So the agenda item would probably be whether or not you want to revisit that policy because it is the adopted policy of the council, and it would have to be rescinded to consider any other use. So the agenda item may be best to be what you adopted as a policy and whether you want to revisit that.
Okay, well, that sounds like providing... I'm sorry, Dan Hilmer, what did you say?
I'll be asking for the agenda item and asking to revisit the resolution.
Okay, so it sounds like until we get it actually timed to put on the agenda, I'll have a conversation with Dan Schwartz about that. And I think those documents, as he indicated, Scott, can be available to all of us to review in the upcoming time. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Terrific. I'm going to stop and ask Allison if anybody has joined us that didn't get a chance to weigh in earlier who would like to be.
Yes, we have some new attendees. So just as a point of information, if you'd like to use the raise hand icon in GoToWebinar, we can call on you and have you be unmuted to give public comments. Otherwise, you can email your comments to comment@cityoflarkspur.org. And as of right now, we have not received any public comments.
Then I think we'll move on and close that item. And they can always send emails and reach us that particular way, too. Terrific. So now we're moving on to number seven, public hearing. It's to waive the first reading of an introduced ordinance 1047, adding chapter 2.5, which is an electronic signature to the City of Larkspur Municipal Code, and adopt an urgency ordinance 1046, adding chapter 2.52 electronic signatures to the city's municipal code. Can I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, it's a fairly straightforward item. The council has the ability to authorize staff to implement a system whereby documents that we typically require wet signature on a piece of paper can now be signed electronically. The urgency aspect of this particular ordinance is because of the COVID-19 situation, we'd like to put that authorization in place right away so that we can begin to allow electronic signatures as soon as we have the software up and running. The, one of the most popular products for this type of work is DocuSign, and I suspect most of us have used it at some point in some transaction. That's the product we propose to use. They have a lot of resources for us to set it up for our government documents. We won't preclude us from looking at another product down the road. So we're asking for you to pass this as an urgency ordinance so that it will take effect right away and we can begin to implement that process.
Are there any questions from the council on this matter, 7.1? Seeing none, it's a public hearing, so I'll need to open this up to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to ask a question or make a comment on agenda item 7.1, which is about signatures documenting, I mean, electronic signatures and an urgency ordinance in that matter? Raise your...
We have no one wishing to make public comments.
All right. Thank you very much for that. So returning it, closing the public hearing and returning it to the city council. Is there any other further discussion on this matter?
I'll move the staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second?
Hi, sorry, this is Sky Wooddrift, the city attorney. I just wanted to clarify that as the mayor read the item, we actually have two ordinances in front of the council. One is an urgency measure that can be approved in a single action, and that's ordinance 1046. The other is a standard ordinance that will require two readings and will take 30 days to go into effect. We just, we're using a belt and suspenders approach to this. So if you could move on each item separately, it would be helpful for the record.
Okay. So we have two items, which are 1047, which is the electronic signature. Do I have a motion to approve urgency ordinance, or ordinance for electronic signature 1047?
To move.
For this one, it would be to waive the reading and introduce. That's the staff recommendation.
Waive the reading and introduce ordinance 1047, adding chapter 2.52 electronic signature. Danny, so moved. Is there a second?
And I'll be happy to second that.
That's Kevin. So we'll do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes. So that brings us to the second item, which is to adopt urgency ordinance 1046, adding chapter 2.52 electronic signatures to our municipal code. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Motion. Scott can't help making a motion.
And second?
I'm happy to second. I'll have a second, Kevin.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harof.
Yes.
Mayor Way.
Yes. So that brings us to the end of public hearings and up to business items. And we have one very large business item, which is how the city is, activities are updated in response to the coronavirus COVID-19. And I will give this now all to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to first start with a thank you to all of our staff members. They have been, whether it's been in their homes or on their visits here to city facilities, they've been doing a yeoman's work to keep the city running while complying with the Public Health Officers directives. We hope that we are modeling the behavior that the community is being asked to conduct. And they're just doing a great job. I'm really proud of them. I would say now we have approximately 90% of the city's workforce working 80% or more of their time at home. We have some people working 100% of their time at home. We're trying as rapidly as possible to transition to the vast majority of folks being able to continue the business of the city while sheltering in place in their homes. As you can imagine, and then folks are experiencing with their own businesses, not everything was ready to be moved to the online world. So we're doing what we can to do that as quickly as possible. I asked all of the department heads to provide me with some summaries of what is going on in their departments so I could report that out. So do a little bit more reading than I often do so that I can share that with you. I suppose in a lot of respects, the department that's been the most visible for us during this period has been our Public Works Department, which consists of two groups. One is our maintenance crews, and then the other is our engineering division. As the councilmember and the public know, the shelter in place are now stay-at-home orders, as it's being called. We were hoping to see folks behave in a way that was consistent with the order. We're seeing increasing levels of compliance, but some of the amenities that make Larkspur the wonderful that it is have also been tempting to folks in terms of congregating and ultimately falling into a pattern of group activity. So we actually joined several agencies prior to the most recent orders and closed our parks to drive up business. We closed all our playgrounds by putting tape up. And we've started to close down other amenities that we fear are high-touch locations, such as tables and benches. And by close, I mean we're putting tape on them and we're putting a lot of signage on them, reminding folks about the order and about the directives with respect to social distancing and staying safe. It might look like it's not that hard to do, but sending our small crew around to do all that work, put those signs up, put that tape up is a lot of their time. So we've spent quite a bit of our maintenance crew energy in helping the public understand which amenities they need to avoid and which ones they should continue to enjoy. As a side note, I have been getting a lot of emails from folks who are concerned about the heavy use of our paths and the difficulty of sometimes maintaining social distancing while you're trying to use the paths. And just really want to encourage folks to be mindful of that as they get out to walk and bike, that we still want to follow this directive and be safe as we take advantage of some of the great paths and trails that we have to offer here in Larkspur. We will continue to do some of our landscaping work in the parks because we have health and safety concerns about not doing that. If we let the parks get overrun, they do attract vermin and other issues and problems that we don't want to see rise. So you will see our crews out doing some work that you might not be doing in your home environment. And the reasons are related to our concern about maintaining the parks and as a safe environment and that can go forward and be used again without any problems. Our engineering division is working hard to keep our public projects going that have been deemed essential under the order. For us, the major project of concern is the Bonner Bridge, which is a lifeline to Marin General and a major component of our community's means of traveling through Larkspur. So the bridge work does continue. We are talking to our crews on a regular basis about following the directives of the stay-at-home order about social distancing and proper work environment. Construction can be challenging. There are times when safety decisions require some proximity to be less than six feet, but they're trying their best to maintain that directive as much as possible. We're still here. We're still taking your complaints and concerns about the infrastructure in the city. So please continue to tell us about potholes and traffic signal issues and cracks in the sidewalks so that we can mark those. If we don't think it's essential, we still want to have it on a list so that when we are out of this period, we have that list ready to go and we're taking care of those jobs. A lot of what people are telling us that they see out in our infrastructure, because we have a lot more folks out enjoying our walking paths and our sidewalks, we do view those as essential because we want to make sure that as you enjoy these amenities during this period and beyond, that those are safe for you to enjoy. With respect to our planning and building department, we are trying right now... we are trying right now for that department, I for the revised stay-at-home order that was issued yesterday by the Public Health Officer of the County of Marin. It does make a significant number of changes from the directive that we received earlier in March. In particular, members of our community who have active residential construction, it's quite possible we'll be visiting your job site or contacting you remotely to discuss the status of the work being done and whether it is now considered non-essential and the project needs to be buttoned up, made safe, and then shut down. That is a strong directive in the new stay-at-home order. And so we've had to revisit all of our open permits, and we have quite a few, to study that status. Now, we were getting calls today from folks saying the order went into effect at midnight. Why aren't you out here enforcing it? Please understand it, it's complicated language and there's legal issues that we have to resolve. But we will be out talking to each construction site and the crews on those construction sites as we sort through the impact from the new order. For folks who haven't been reading in all of the details in the stay-at-home orders, projects that were allowed yesterday are not allowed now. And it's not something we can immediately make a determination about on all projects. So we would appreciate folks expressing their concerns to us, but understanding we have some limitations in timeline. We're also now trying to figure out how we would do a planning review type of public hearing in this digital world. Sounds simple, but for folks who've never attended a planning hearing, there's a lot of documents that need to be reviewed. And also, we have a planning commission that's very respectful of property owners' interests and makes a strong point of trying to visit the project sites. And so that's a little difficult to do while complying with the, the stay-at-home orders. So we're weighing all of that now and hope to be providing more guidance and directives and directions here shortly. This is also a great opportunity for us to continue to invest in our technology and in our effort to make our records online and available more to the public that way. So we've been transitioning some of our staff work in that direction because that's a good activity for us to be doing now as some of these other activities slow down. Our two community service departments are open in a sense. You can't come to our library. We're very sad that you can't come visit our library. And for folks who don't know, my office is about 25 feet from the door of the library and I'm accustomed to that being a pretty busy space. And it's, it's actually jarring when I'm at City Hall to not see that activity. But our library director and his staff have been working very hard to put as many digital content items up on our website to help folks in terms of how to utilize the library while they're sheltering in place. Strongly encourage you to visit the library's page on our website and take advantage of many of the opportunities that they're highlighting. Also, our library director and our reference librarian will answer your phone calls and your emails. So if you are doing some research and you have a question that you would normally be asking a research librarian when you were here visiting us or visiting another library, please feel free to shoot them a message. They'll respond to it as they can. They're monitoring the email. They're, they're checking their voicemails and they will get back to you as quickly as they can. Our recreation department, if you haven't seen their website, they've launched a virtual recreation department and have a lot of neat resources on there in terms of folks finding ways to use videos and other things to stay active. And we strongly encourage folks to take a look there. We did have to make the difficult decision that we were going to cancel our super cool summer school program. It's very popular in the community. It's our, our several weeks of camp programming that we provide usually at one of the school campuses in Larkspur. Unfortunately, with it unclear when the stay-at-home order will be lifted and, and the logistics that go into running summer school, we didn't feel that was something we could offer the community in a successful way this year. So that's something that, that was difficult and we hope people are understanding. The other thing that we've begun to do is work with our counterparts in Corte Madera from Recreation to figure out how we might be able to launch some community outreach and volunteer support during this time. So they're working diligently to create a system whereby residents of the Twin Cities can contact members of the city recreation departments to get all sorts of general guidance and support. They'll be here for you to answer your phone calls, take your questions, put you in touch with the right folks so that you get the support you might need during this period. And we hope to have that information up soon. And I believe they're working on a plan to distribute that information door to door. We won't be knocking on the door and asking you to answer, but leaving something for you because we know there are a lot of members of our community that, that are not engaging us as much online. And we want to make sure we're reaching out to all of you as well. I also want to commend our childcare center staff. They've been trying to figure out ways they can contribute with the childcare center closed. And I was particularly impressed to learn that our pre-kindergarten teacher, Tricia France, today conducted her first Zoom storytime for her pre-K childcare center participants. So, you know, even our youngest members of our community are getting online and learning all about the ways to do social interaction during this period. And really want to commend her and the other members of the childcare staff for working on these little projects to, to keep some of their activities alive during this period. We're also working on moving some of the staff from the childcare center into tasks that they can do to, to contribute more to the community and to city operations while remaining safe, given that the childcare center is closed at this time. And I want to thank our, our director, Dick Whitley. He's wearing many hats for us right now. He's sort of part of our police force, if you will, in that he's monitoring inappropriate activities that sort of launch spontaneously in some of our fields and asking folks to, to break up when they're, they're not observing social distancing. He's become a major servicer of all of the different city facilities, moving things, whether it's mail or items between the different facilities. And so just want to call him out for that special contribution. It sounds small maybe, but for us, that was something we lost when we lost a lot of our staff being here on site. So thank you to him for sort of stepping up and filling in the void.
Here, here to that.
Can I ask a question, Madam Mayor?
Sure. Do you, do you have more, more to report, Dan, in your?
I have two more items, so.
Why don't we, Dan Helmer, why don't you ask your question before he continues?
This is a question regarding the Redwood High School playfields. And how might we support your efforts to decrease risk by unsafe gatherings on the high school property playfields?
So the school district began on Monday, a new initiative to better lock down their campuses. You know, those who frequent Redwood High School know that it is by design a somewhat open facility. And so they've started the process of dismantling basketball hoops, removing tennis court nets, and then locking every gate they have that they can lock. And then what they'll next do is coordinate with us to get more signage up and around the school property. If a member of the public sees activity that is inconsistent with the social distancing directive, this, this thing is still to call into the police department and let them know this is going on right now. It would be great if you could come over. Now, understand our-
Not the 911, to use the non-emergency number, right?
That's right. So the, understand that our police are handling a lot right now and they want to be there to help with breaking up social distancing. But sometimes that has to wait a little bit and the activity has sometimes broken up before they can get there. One of the things we've been doing is having our police cadets serve in that role and dispatching them onto the scene. And frankly, most folks, we find, I talked to the chief about this, they sort of forgot. A lot of these activities sort of break out. There may be with some of our populations that aren't thinking as much about these dangers. And it, it just takes an authority figure reminding them and the activity is broken up. The-
Interrupt, so it's clear to the public, this is not a 911 number unless it's a matter of-
Yeah.
It's the, the non-emergent number for Central Marine Police is 9275150. So that's the number to, I assume that's the number that the chief would like people to report those type of activities to. Am I correct with that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You beat me to sharing the phone number, yes.
Well, my comment is, is mostly relative to soccer-related activities where parents and trainers are organizing kids who once sat on the field or not observing the physical distancing advisory. And even when reminded, the supervisors as such are quite uncooperative when you present this to them.
My understanding in talking to the chief is that over the weekend, they broke up quite a few activities on the Redwood football field. They only had one business person operating a recreational activity who refused to stop. And the approach we've been using is to forcibly end activity if the police are on scene and it's necessary. That hasn't really come to that. With the new order, my understanding is that the police authorities throughout the county intend to be, begin issuing more citations.
Well, clear, this, I recognize there are some people who obey the distancing issue advisory and get out on the track and are walking and stuff like that. And I'm not talking about that. Actually, I'm talking about the other field. It's on the other side of the campus. It's closer to the marsh where there's a lot of, it's very organized, but they're just, this is as, as recent as a couple of days ago. They're just not paying attention.
So I'd like to interject that I think to, to remind the public that the city does not have jurisdiction over our schools. The school properties are the jurisdiction of the Tampa Pius Union High School District and their board. So this might be something that we could ask that we continue to work cooperatively with our school district and our law enforcement. But I want to make sure the public recognizes that we have limited ability to restrict access to property that isn't ours. Would that be a valid way of saying?
Understood.
Okay. I mean, but I think we need to continue to do what's safe for all of us and the community. So working with the school districts to make this their priority is something I, I'll intend to work with.
Thank you, Madam.
Anything else you wanted to ask, Dan, at this time?
I have, I have another question that I'll save.
Okay. So your last two items, Dan Schwartz?
So I just wanted to conclude. I did want to thank Alice of Alice, our city clerk. You know, she's got to get this type of meeting running. And then we've tasked her to get us up and running on digital signatures as of now. She's already been doing a lot of the research and work to make that happen. And then I wanted to assure the public that, well, we are busy crunching numbers. The Ministry of Service Director and I sort of figured out how the city will survive, much like you are all looking at different businesses and trying to figure out how they're going to survive. We will figure that out. We will be here. I want to thank Kathy. She's been doing a lot of deep dive analysis of our revenue and what we can and can't expect over the next many months. And then also should acknowledge Assistant to the City Manager Shannon O'Hare is our communications officer. I think those who've visited our website since our last council meeting have seen us really populate it quite a bit with links to get you the most readily available information. And we actually have staff people monitoring key websites every day to make sure that if there's a new link that's about beneficial to our public, that we're offering that link to you. That was the conclusion now, Madam Mayor, and I'll take all the questions the council may have.
Thank you for that. I did notice the website was looking very dynamic. And I, I saw today the link to how to Larkspur, how people can volunteer. And I, I thought that was terrific because that's something that's been discussed offline about how Larkspur can help each other's residences and businesses by volunteering, so.
Would it be all right if I comment on that, Madam Mayor? We, we focused on that information that's on that website. I've had a lot of folks say the city should coordinate volunteers. And we're trying to do some of that within the neighborhoods through the NRG program, our Neighborhood Response Group program. But I really strongly encourage folks who want to get involved to follow those links. There are nonprofits that are set up to, to match people with the best volunteer opportunity in terms of both what people are interested in doing and what they know is out there in terms of actual need for volunteer people power. And so our preference is to maximize the resources that are already out there and connect you with the volunteer opportunities that exist rather than try to duplicate efforts that are actually going on right now. So that's why we've worked that way and we admit, when I get asked sometimes, why isn't the city itself doing more? It's, we really want to push you toward those, those helpful resources.
And I actually think that's really worthwhile because the CVNL, the Center for Volunteer Nonprofit Leadership, is actually the hub within the County of Marin that will immobilize and send out volunteers who've pre-registered for future times of events, disaster or need within the community. And so they're always trying to make a more robust database, not just right now during this coronavirus crisis. But you can always submit your information and suggest that you would be interested in volunteering when there's a future need, which we know we won't be having. So I'd like to start with questions. Is Gabe, do you have any questions first?
No questions right now, thank you.
All right. Scott, do you have any questions of the city manager?
No questions.
All right. Dan Helmer, you said you had one more or a couple more?
It's a, it's mostly a neighborhood issue. I want to know what we can do to discourage the use of blowers by the landscape crews. We live in a pretty tight, small lot neighborhood and the landscape crews show up often with the property owner having left, knowing the crew is coming, and then they start using blowers, blowing things between the properties and in the air while people are walking down the street. And it's just, it doesn't make any sense to me that we can't find a way to get the message out that this is not a reducing risk with these sorts of behaviors. It's a question.
Do you want to?
So landscaping is actually one of the more nebulous topics in the stay-at-home order. And it's been a topic of much discussion in meetings that I've attended. I encourage every resident to read the order in its entirety. And in particular, focus on- And in particular, focus on the types of services that are in and around your home. And your personal landscapers may be something that you need to take a hard look at. The order leads a lot to the individual property owner in terms of deciding whether the landscape work is essential or non essential. And so the difficulty in answering Councilmember Hilmer's question is we're not really positioned in a way to come out and make the determination based on the order reach individual activity. And so in terms of leaf blowers, I probably would agree with you that it's a non essential activity. But if you read the order, it really leaves it up to individual property owners to make decisions about what constitutes landscaping to look pretty and maintain your general appearance of your home versus landscaping that promotes the health and safety of your household. And it's the same determination we're making with respect to landscaping in our parks that if we let it go too much, we're going to have vermin in our parks and we don't want to have that. But I don't have a great answer for you, Councilmember Hilmer. We're just not positioned to go throughout the city and shut a lot of that activity down. We really need probably, we'll put out, we can put out more reminders to the community about what the order actually says and encourage folks to stop. At some point, we're probably going to need neighbors to talk to neighbors.
Would it be appropriate to have our neighborhood NRG discuss the issue and maybe request that block captains send out a discouragement of these sorts of activities?
I would disagree.
I think, I think it would be more-
Because you know, the Neighborhood Response Group format is designed really for emergent response. And this type, to me, this type of issue is something that doesn't belong in that forum. But that's my opinion on that. Gabe's now in charge of the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee and the NRG. So he might have a comment on that. But you know, I also referenced that we did outlaw gas powered motors a number of years ago. So we do have an ordinance in place that you can point to for the use of gas powered motors that are not battery charged at this point, too.
What if I personally feel that I'm being put at risk by somebody blowing stuff in my face?
Well, if that's-
I don't know, I don't know where the equipment's been. I don't know where the workers have been. I don't know what people have put on the surfaces on their property. I just don't see this as a either essential or a risk reduction sort of behavior.
Wouldn't we have to go by the order, the order which doesn't really specify that? Maybe we need to spend a little bit more time looking at that.
I would appreciate any assistance the city could provide.
Gabe, did you-
One comment, I think I just wanted to reinforce because the Neighborhood Response Groups have really been looking at their role. And while I share Councilmember Hilmer's concern, I don't think that policing or enforcing would really fall within their training. But I do think that it falls very much within the same type of behavior and intervention as the Redwood soccer games back by the marsh. I think these are things to call the police because it's not stopping yard activity or necessarily determining all the things about landscaping, whether it's vermin or not. You know, the specific blowing of air and aerosols and whatnot is something where I would call, you know, the non emergency police number. That would be, you know, if I were in that position, that's what I would do. But I would not use the Neighborhood Response Groups for that.
Any further-
I appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate those comments.
Any further thought about that? Or should we explore a little bit more this subject with what we can actually do for enforcement? Because that's, enforcement is the issue. Anybody? I'm looking at blank faces.
I'll figure it out myself.
All right.
No, I think it's time to maybe move on to another, other issues that we may have questions about.
Are there anybody, any, Kevin, I don't think you've had an opportunity. Are there any questions of the city manager's report that you have?
Yeah. So mostly I'm kind of just want a little more deeper dive in terms of city finances and opportunities that may be presenting themselves in terms of grant monies or other financial opportunities as a result of our emergency declaration.
The most immediate matter is that you may recall that in the immediate wake of the declaration of emergency, I had informed the council that that we would be paying folks while we sorted out what to do and what would be the best directive. Since then, the federal acts have passed about how to employ folks and how to give folks leave during the emergency. And there are tax credits assigned to those acts. And so we, as the acts went into effect today, actually, and we implemented all the provisions of that. So that as the city operations are affected by the COVID-19 emergency, we'll be in a position to make the same sorts of tax credit claims that private businesses will be making. That was actually, the city itself right now, I wouldn't say anyone has flagged a specific disaster related pot of money. We're doing the things we need to do to document our possible expenses so that if there's FEMA money later, we'd be eligible. But as I've reminded many folks offline, a lot of the work that goes into responding to a public health emergency is the county's, not the city. And so I think that agency, the County of Marin, for us, is the one that's bearing a lot of the early burden of this crisis. And by that, I mean the burden of expending resources in response, not the impacts. But it's quite likely we will begin to have to do more expenditures along those lines. And so we're making the right documentation to have that available. I think the most critical thing for us as Larkspur is that as long as we can continue to do it in a safe way, we're going to move forward with our federally funded infrastructure projects. Because those have sensitive timelines around them. And not following those timelines might jeopardize federal money and create a financial burden for Larkspur that we don't want to see happen that goes beyond just that we would slow the project down.
Is that mostly related to the storm sewer issues and clean water?
Well, our primary, the bridge itself is our primary-
And the bridge, yeah.
That we're concerned about. Right now, we, the only new project we're getting online or continuing project, I should say, really, is this year's pavement or Measure B will put out the bid based on your actions. Your actions today. We do feel continuing to invest in the road system during this period is important. And in all likelihood, the actual work on the roads will take place in the summer. And by then, the stay at home order should look radically different, if not be gone. Now, I have, interestingly enough, I've had several folks tell me we ought to be doing every project possible right now because nobody's out and about. And it's the least disruptive possibility we've ever had to get our projects done. But there's always so many contractors to-
Yeah, that sounds a bit ambitious.
You want to be thoughtful about the overall disruption to the community.
Well, we do have an actual plan and for the how that's going to work. And so if, from what your comment was, Kevin, it sounds like when we get, as we move forward in this process, that adding sort of a financial assessment to the manager's report would be helpful for all of us in this over, in an overview way, not in the detailed way. But I found that very helpful. So I'd like-
I think that would probably begin with your main, your meetings in May, where we can really give you a true snapshot. Just as a reminder to the council and the public, a lot of the revenues that come in the city have a period of lag before we actually see the data. And so sales tax, for example, which we all can anticipate a large financial hit to the city, has a two month lag. So we don't yet know, other than anecdotally driving around town, we don't really know what that hit looks like. The other mystery for us is actually, you know, one little glimmer of hope in all of this for city finances is the collection of internet sales tax may actually be on the rise in Larkspur. And so we may see some offset of the losses we're experiencing locally. You know, I think the more immediate impacts to the city, it won't be fully known until we reach May. And we can start to see that data.
And I think that's a really-
Yeah, I'm sorry. That was part of the reason I was asking the question because I'm assuming where we should be anticipating a challenge on our sales tax revenue. I'm hopeful because most of our financing is property tax based, that that's going to remain pretty stable. We're going to have some challenges coming up.
My understanding is that eighty plus percent of the sales taxes or property tax has already been collected. The deadline is the 10th of April. So at least for this fiscal year, we anticipate that revenue stream remaining stable. You know, the combination of what this crisis means for property values, I don't know. I would like to think that they mostly will remain flat here in Marin. Historically, during times of crisis in the past, what's happened in Marin is that property values have sort of just stayed where they are. You never know. So we have to start building contingency plans if that proves not to be the case. And then, of course, while I know as a taxpayer and the desire to push out any tax payment I can, there's a lot of very important reasons for the maintenance of our public safety and our health and safety and our general city services that the tax, property tax payments come in on time. I know that's a heavy, hot and heavy debate right now with a lot of residents and a lot of folks out in the community. Our system in California is not built for there to be delays in the payment of property tax. So that has been resolved for April, but I wouldn't be stunned if that continues to be a topic even going into the next round of payments for December.
I think that's very important for the, all of us to realize and the public to realize that a city like Larkspur relies on two sources of income, primarily property tax and sales tax. And without those, we will, or having them change dramatically, we will be having to make some pretty significant decisions moving forward, particularly realizing where our priorities have to be for public health and safety. Any further questions of city manager? All right. It looks like we reached the end of our agenda, our meeting-
Madam Mayor, I don't know, do you want to ask Allison if the public had any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Allison, she's, Allison?
Yes, thank you. We did have one public comment come in from Jeannie Friedel. Not a question, but a comment to Mr. Schwartz's request for items of concern in public areas. There are three or four hazards on the walkway into Piper Park to the left of the entrance to the picnic area. End of comment.
Okay. So noted. So I can make sure that the Public Works is aware of that public comment. Thank you for that. And so it looks like we are adjourned until April 15th on this same platform at this point. So everyone be safe, stay at home, wash your hands, and stay six feet at least away from people you don't actually live with. And follow all the health and safety requirements by the CDC and the Marin County Public Health Directives. And be patient with all of us. Thank you very much.
And again, thank you, Dan, for your leadership and for all the hard work our staff is putting in under these challenging times.
Yes. Thank you and good night.
Motion to adjourn?
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't, I don't know. I'm thinking about it.
Sky, we don't need a roll call vote on that motion to adjourn, do we?
No, that's fine.
All right. And thank you, Sky, for being, even though you're like the Wizard of Oz and I can only see you behind some black curtain here.
That's how I like it.
All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.